Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
I'd like to call this informational meeting of Tuesday, June 15th, 2021, to order. Our first item up today is council remarks. Any counselor remarks?
Hi, good.
Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, and I'm not sure exactly why I did this. Well, I know why I did this, but I went out, and maybe this is more bragging than anything, but I am now an official member of the Multicultural Center Board of Directors. So, the city funds the program, and I thought it was really an important part. This past weekend, they had their multicultural festival and had, I wouldn't call it record attendance, but similar to what it was many, many years ago. So, I think the weather has a huge difference in the turnout, but they had a successful fundraiser, and there will be much more coming from the Multicultural Center with their new executive director. And there'll be a lot of things coming forward, so it'll be, they're going to be lucky to have me.
Congratulations. Other, other council remarks? Seeing none, we'll move right into presentations, and before we start, I'd like to remind everybody that we do have a hard stop at 5:30 for public comment. So, we'll move right into the USD Discovery District. Bob Munt has a presentation.
Good afternoon, counselors. Thank you for allowing time to talk a little bit about a project that we are working with the USD Discovery District on. Really trying to take a look at the Discovery District and how we might be able to play a role and kind of cranking some of the activity and stuff out there right now. We've had a couple of opportunities over the last few months, few years, to take a look at what we need to do on this. If it's okay with you, I want to walk through this presentation with you and just kind of talk about some of the slides and offer it up to you for some discussion moving forward. We're still in the stage of planning some of this stuff, and so the great details aren't there yet, but we certainly want to make you aware of what we're talking about here. So, the Discovery District... The right arrow, right? There we go, okay. So, just a short history. The University Center was established about 2001, technically. It's currently managed by the University of South Dakota. Most of you know where it is, kind of on the northwest side of Sioux Falls. It was a partnership between Forward Sioux Falls, the City of Sioux Falls, the South Dakota Board of Regents, and then GOED. It includes the Community College for Sioux Falls. It includes the USD Discovery District, and then the Graduate Education Applied Researcher, the GEAR Center out there as well. And Dan Ingebrithson is with me here today, representing the college today. We started with shared goals. What are our goals in this thing? It was to foster innovation-focused economic development, to keep South Dakota graduates in the state, to strengthen the region's capacity to support, grow, and attract innovation-based bioscience companies and high-tech businesses resulting in high-level jobs in the salary ranges of, you know, $68,000 to $70,000, and utilizing that collaborative resource of regional medical centers, regional education institutions, and private sector partnerships to really build on that. So, we have several very powerful health organizations here with Sanford, Avera, SAB Biotherapeutics, and a few others that are really starting to show up on the map as far as the bioscience and biopharmaceuticals portion of this. The space out there right now exists with three buildings. You are aware of that. This is kind of what they look like. It includes the GEAR Center and affiliated startup companies that are out there, classroom space for USD, SDSU, some of the other universities, joint meeting spaces, USD offices, as I mentioned, the Community College for Sioux Falls, the USD Biomedical Engineering Program, which sometimes isn't that well-known, but is getting to be a lot better known under Dan's leadership. We've got several graduates. We'll talk about some numbers here in a minute. And then the Tech Readiness Acceleration Program or the TAC program, which works with accelerated technology and incorporating that into businesses that we have here. So, it's headed by Dr. Ingebrithson. We have 47 undergrad students there, 20 master's degree and PhD candidates. It fills up about 22,000 square feet out there. Seven new biotech startups have graduated and formed there, and it populates really the Sioux Falls biomedical industry. So, again, those graduates are going to places like Sanford, like Avera, like SAB Biopharmaceuticals. So, we're keeping those kids here, I shouldn't say kids, those graduates here. What we run into now, though, is that as we start recruiting bioscience companies, we really have very little adaptable space to show them. That center out there as it exists today is pretty much full. We've got a few small spots for some startup companies, but we end up referring them to other lab spaces, so to the Avera lab space, to the Sanford lab space. And as you know, both those organizations are growing. Their research departments are growing. They're starting to fill up their own space, so their ability to lease that to companies that we might be, might come in are becoming less and less. And so, what we really need is some adaptive space to really fit those needs, the proper ventilation systems, compliant rooms, clean rooms, all those types of rooms that aren't in your typical building, right? So, we have to specially design those for that in order to propel that lab space that they need. What we feel today is that it's really time to create that competitive shell space that is flexible enough so that we build it out to those clients. They can actually walk into that building, take a look at what we're going to have, take those letters of interest, turn those into letters of intent, which intend, we then turn them into actual leases for that facility and build out the program to fit their needs. Some of the prospects that we're working with, as you know, we can't tell you the names of the prospects, but we can kind of give you the fields that they're looking into. And by reading through some of this, certainly, you know, you can see these are the biopharmaceutical companies. These are the bioscience companies. Many of the terms in these things I can't pronounce, so I'll just let you kind of read through there as far as what those are. But they are the high-tech types of bioscience companies that we see coming out of places like USD and others. These are the types of future fund or future programs that we would see coming into those facilities. And where is this interest coming from? What we've been tracking and monitoring is, you know, where do we see the flight of these companies? And you can read through there, but for the most part, they're coming from some of those hotspots for biosciences. And the reason they're coming here is because it's getting so expensive there to operate in those particular locations that they're in, that they're looking for new creative energetic space that they can come to. They're looking for new labor pools. They're looking for, you know, new quality of life, if you will, in some of those places. And so, we're getting a lot of interest from those particular companies. Many of them are smaller companies, kind of in that research and development stage, but that's really kind of what we're looking at in this particular area. So, the partners that we put together, the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, Discovery District, ISG and Journey have come together to kind of form a group that's kind of looked at, what can we do out there to make this a little more palatable, to make it, take this to the next level? So, what we've come up with is a concept of a 50,000-square-foot shell research facility, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But in partnership with those people that I just mentioned, our target really is, we believe we can create up to 250 jobs there in this particular site of those high-paying biomedical jobs. And right now, the average salary in that area is about $68,000 a year. Tenants will commit to the building. They can see, as I mentioned before, it's hard for a tenant to commit to a building that's just on paper, that they can't really see, and that we, you know, we talk to them about, well, we think we're going to build this, but we're not sure how we're going to do that, but trust us, we'll have a building there. In this case, we can have a building that's adaptable, that's able for them to move into, and it helps to catalyze the rest of the research part, too. We've kind of been in a holding pattern for various reasons over the last several years, and we think that kind of this next impetus can make, can push that forward. So, this is kind of the site. If you, I'm sure you're familiar with it. This is kind of the roundabout that's out at the Discovery District right now. You can kind of see the three buildings that are already there. It's actually the southeast corner of that particular roundabout that we're looking at putting this building. And so, you see the yellow outline of the building that's there along with the parking lots and then potential other buildings on that particular site, too, whether they're extensions of the existing or extensions of the new building that we'd be proposing or separate buildings, as you see on the far east side of that. That would be kind of the next phase that we'd be looking at in this project. This is an artist rendering, again, of what the site or the building would look like from the outside. Again, trying to make it kind of that high-tech look, that look that everybody wants to be in, you know, that they want to bring their clients to, so it really fits in with the surroundings around that as well. We would build out the front part of this as a common entrance space, if you will, to really be appealing, and so people would come in there and be able to kind of see this finished-out space and what it could look like if they were to come in there. And then, we would leave the rest of the building basically open. So, it would be, just as I said, a shell building that could be redesigned to, again, the tenant specifications, whatever it is that they need, whether it's $5,000, $10,000, $20,000, whatever it might be. We can design that space and build it out basically to fit their needs. But again, we'd have a physical facility that we could actually have on the ground, that we could show them and make sure that they knew exactly where they were going to be. Another rendering here, just kind of showing both floors open for space. So, we'd have roughly about 45,000 square feet of usable space. If you take some of the common area and stuff out, about 45,000 square feet of usable space. So, that's the concept that we're kind of working towards right now, and we wanted to kind of get it out in front of all of you to take a look at that. We're still working through some of the financing and stuff with that. We've got some really good ideas, I think, on the table. We want to make sure that, you know, as the city kind of looks at how they might be spending some of their stimulus money, that this might be something that's on the table for that. We have a lot of work to do as far as with our developers, potential developers, putting those numbers together as we have laid out here. So, we're talking with a couple of different developers at this point in time to kind of see what that's going to look like. We want to work through that again, so I wanted to, again, get this out on the table to you guys. We want to get this moving. We think the sooner the better on this thing. But like I said, we've got a few things to work out on the financing part of this, and we want you guys to be a part of that. So, with that, I'll kind of open it up for questions for anyone. I know Counselor Sale, I've been working with you on this kind of on the backside, so I don't know if you have any more comments on that.
Questions, counselors? Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I think this is good, good information. And I think what is, it's no secret, I've been supportive of the USD Discovery District for many years, as well as pretty much counsel the whole entire time. I think what's really key for me is that we, as a community, have to diversify our jobs. We can't just focus on manufacturing jobs only, or we might be a neighboring city not far in another state that has struggled because they only focused on said manufacturing. I think we all know who it is without saying. But I think it's so important to diversify our economy and our jobs, and these are high-paying jobs. These are great jobs, and it's also another industry within our city. And so, I'm excited. It's a marathon, not a sprint. And so, I know it's been frustrating over the years because people want to flip the switch, and they want to see change immediately, and it just doesn't happen that way with these kinds of facilities. But the fact that Dr. Ingebrithson, I always say your name wrong, I'm sorry. The fact that you're still here, you're really pushing forward with the educational component is key, too. Oftentimes, we lose people to other neighboring states as well because we don't have that component. And so, I'm excited. I'm looking forward to more details to see what comes and hopes that we can, you know, just set some funding aside to see what we need to make happen for getting this project continued to go.
Thank you for your comments. I would just add to that a little bit. I mean, I told this body before, our targets are advanced manufacturing, logistics and distribution, biosciences, biopharmaceuticals, and cybers, right? So, this is a great start, I think, on that bioscience piece of it. And again, we have to start somewhere, so this is, I think, a great opportunity for us to leverage the resources we have available today to make that happen. And, you know, you'll hear more about the cyber piece of this, too, hopefully later on this fall. So, again, a lot of things in the works right now, but this is now, and again, we're excited about this as well, so thank you.
And thanks for being involved in it, too, because it's important to have your leadership.
I learn new terms every day.
I can't say most of those either, so don't feel bad.
Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. As I was explaining to this group that's here today, I mean, my career was in science and biology, so I'm very supportive of this, and the possibilities are limitless when it comes to biomedicine and bioscience and biopharmaceuticals. But I'm going to ask some tough questions, so it sounds a little bit like we're hoping, is it... Correct me if I'm wrong, Bob. Is this a, we'll build it and hope they come scenario? Do we absolutely have somebody that if we build this, they're going to fill that space?
I would answer that question is no, we don't have somebody. We have a list of prospects that we want to work, but again, as I mentioned, it's tough to sell a facility when you don't have a facility to sell. And, you know, it's easy to show them this on paper and say, hey, this looks really good. But until you have the plans in place and you have a contractor in place to start building it, and you can go to that company and say, we will have this building operational by this time at this year, and we will help you with your build-out, et cetera, it's really tough to talk further with those companies. And I think that's some of the issues we've had over the last year is, you know, we've brought companies to the table. Dan and his team have brought companies to the table, but it's just tough to compete with the Ascent Center in Rapid City and the facility up in Brookings and things like that when we don't have a facility to actually show them. So, that would be my answer. I don't have anybody that's ready to sign on the dotted line. Again, I'm hoping once we get through this process of approvals to actually build this facility, we can bring those people back to the table and say, this is our timeline. This is what we're going to do.
And a follow-up to that, actually, two. Let's say that we wanted to make sure that we're going to get a definite return on our investment, and so that we're not building, putting up a building without assurances. Let's say that the funding, we can assure the funding's there, and as soon as we have you signed on the dotted line, it's going to go forward because the funding's already been authorized for a period of three years, let's say, at which time the funding sunsets. Would that be beneficial?
I would say yes, but I would also say that we are still working through the finances of this, and so it's going to depend upon the developer and what they can work with and how well-capitalized they are and what kind of risks they're willing to take and things like that. But I think what we're trying to do is to figure out, how can we leverage all the resources that we have here available to us to get to the best possible scenario? That may include some type of payback after a certain number of years. It may not. So, at this point in time, we don't have those finances worked out yet.
And my other question, dealing with space and building. Our community college, it's been kind of struggling, in my opinion, with an identity. It was first a university. Well, actually, it started right across the street here in what was called the Burgland Center because I was actually taking graduate classes there at the time. And then, they built in the current location and then named it the University Center. And I know that there was a great degree of concern from around the state that Sioux Falls was going to overtake Brookings and Spearfish and Vermilion, and I don't think that concern has gone away yet. Now, we're a community, we're referring to ourselves as a, I shouldn't say ourselves, but they're referring to it as a community college. So, that's why I still think it's kind of, there's no doubt in my mind which way I'd want it to go if I had, if I were king for a day, but I'm not. And so, having said all of that, is there possibility that there's going to be space available on the existing campus in what we refer to as the Community College now that might be vacated? I know that there's a group that's going to be discussing, are we overlapping services here in Sioux Falls between the Community College and Southeast Technical College and other programs across the state? That's a tough one for you to answer, but I mean, I'd hate to, coming from where I'm at, I'd hate to put up a building, and now we have other space directly across the road that's available.
So, I'll try to answer this, and Dr. Ingebrithson, you can jump in whenever I don't speak right, okay? First of all, the Community College, the stories that you just mentioned, I've become familiar with that as well. That was before my time, but I know it's kind of struggled to kind of get off the ground, the Community College, and how that fits into the total educational system. I know that they're looking at, you know, what are some of the things that might happen with the Community College? My direct answer to that, Counselor Kylie, would be that the existing buildings could be retrofitted to be a modern-day bioscience complex, but it would be probably at about the same cost as building a new building there, and it would then eliminate any other programs from the universities going into that existing space as we see it today. So, I know Dr. Ingebrithson and the GEAR Center, those lab spaces and stuff that he has are pretty much full and will continue to be full. I mean, there are spaces that are being utilized right now, and the space that the Community College has right now, it would be very difficult to retrofit those with the clean space that we need. You know, there's a certain, there's something that has to happen with the floors so that they don't shake, and I can't remember what the term for that is, but things like that, that would not be in these existing buildings that would have to be in this new building. So, I hope that answers your question a little bit better.
Well, I can understand that fully because we had that debate about four years ago on a facility that we're building here for the City of Sioux Falls. And so, I made those points myself. Please don't take my questions as lack of support for the Discovery District.
That's why we're here.
But those are questions that I know that I had to ask.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ask away. We're still searching for answers ourselves, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Munt, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Dr. Ingebrithson a couple of questions.
Yeah.
That gets you off the hot seat. Bob, get out of the way, so.
Yes, I'll ask.
Dan can go.
Yes, Counselor Starr?
Yes, good afternoon. One of the things that I want to, I want to hear you sell the vision. There are so many neat things or cool things, whatever we want to call it, that you're doing at the GEAR Center, and I think there are so many people in our community that have no idea what you're doing. But do they have a need? It's not their area. What do your students need that they don't have now? Is it more space? Is it better equipment? Is it, you know, what are you doing that we can help you continue to grow and that they spin off jobs and become entrepreneurs as part of their graduate work?
How much time do I have?
5:30 is as far as I get to go.
The thing they need most is jobs. A lot of our students want to graduate, want to stay here, but there's no place for them to work. I started USD's Biomedical Engineering Department back in 2006. We didn't have any space. We ultimately moved into the GEAR Center in 2009. Somewhat to your question, Counselor Kylie, the GEAR Center was always envisioned as a place where we had a business incubator on the ground floor, and we had the Biomedical Engineering Department on the top floor. While I've spent a lot of years in the university setting, I'm a far cry from being an academic. I've started companies. That's what I like to do. The vision I sold to President Abbott at that time with going to the GEAR Center was I want to have places where students can cross paths with industry, those ideas can get born, and we can keep those students here. And I'm very proud to say that many of the graduates that we have from biomedical engineering are staying local. We've got a couple that work for Alumet, a couple that are at Poet, and we've been able to keep some here. But many of them that have wanted to stay here have really had to leave because we really don't have this sort of opportunity for these sorts of great-paying jobs. And so, that's what they need, is a place to go. From a my commitment, my vision, I grew up here. Literally, my one complaint about the Discovery District is, I grew up on the west side. I grew up on North Marion Road. That was where I went pheasant hunting after school. The beautiful waterway that winds through that, that we're going to put bike paths along, that was a really great place to hunt pheasants, and well, that's frowned upon now, I guess. And, but, but, I went to the original Hayward Elementary, the original Axdale Park, the original Washington High School, went to Augustana College, but I had to leave the state. And what brought me back here about 16 years ago was the opportunity to do just these sorts of things. I'm fortunate that President Abbott, and followed by President Guestring, said, hey, Dan, we like what you're doing. Do it and do more of it. And that's, I said, we need this. We, you can't sell things you don't have. So, to have space that's available for people to be able to rapidly fit out and go, that's a key part. And kind of back to your concern of competing with us, this is USD, both on the Discovery District and the Community College for Sioux Falls. President Guestring leads them both, and so the space will be managed. I think there has been some work by Senate Bill 55, how can we better utilize those spaces? And some things that we've talked about is moving things in from the GEAR Center. I think we'll look at some federal opportunities to put other resources in there to help support the things that we'll be doing in the Discovery District. So, I don't see them as being, competing with one another or conflicted with one another at all, but all marching towards that same goal, that same mission, that same vision, which is to keep the graduates from South Dakota here.
I totally agree. I just want to see more graduates, to get more jobs. I mean, it's a chicken-or-egg type of thing. Do we make the investment? Do we have to wait till everything's a guaranteed deal? How do you kick that first domino over to, or maybe it's the second or third? Because when I do dominos, they don't, first one doesn't always catch the second one, but you know what I'm saying. So, it's, how do you see these type of programs happen in other parts of the country? Is it the government that makes that first, you know, or the state that makes that first initial investment? I'm sure it's like, if you've seen one, you've seen one type of thing.
That certainly, well, just looking locally, you go up to Brookings. It's been the, that was primarily led by a partnership with the city of Brookings that really drove a lot of that. You know, the state has obviously participated, but it's been, I would say, more guided by the city and some of the individuals within the city, Al Kurt and Bach and those sorts, that have been key players there. I do think we want to get the state involved and engaged in this, so there certainly have been and will be phone calls to try to get that going as well. But if we want to keep our kids, this is kind of how we do it.
Thank you.
Other comments? Counselor Jensen?
My questions might be for Bob, and maybe not even questions, but, you know, maybe just help me understand. And I wasn't a part of the council at the time, but Foundation Park, right?
Yeah.
We put that land together, package deal, the state worked on it, the city worked on it. We made that land ready for development, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we invested as a city into that project through your organization and Ford Sioux Falls?
Yes.
Okay. As I look at this project, I look at it a little bit like Foundation Park, and it's a little different because you have, you're going after different targets here, right? We're going after startup companies that don't have access to financing for a long-term building commitment. So, they need a, they need a building to lease. Would that be accurate in saying that?
Yeah, and I'm not even sure that startup companies would be exactly right. These have started up. It's just that they're in different phases of their research and development and things like that. So, many of these have capital to finance their development and research and things like that. They're just looking to kind of, you know, hit paydirt, so to speak, where they can take their product and mass-produce it or whatever, and there's different levels of where they're at on that. But yeah, your concept is absolutely correct.
So, from a financing perspective, someone needs to take the risk, and it would be a little bit of the developer in this case, or a developer in this case. It'd be, you know, Bob and his group, it'd be USD and their group, all taking a risk on this. We started this project years ago when I was in the legislature, right, actually, before I came. Counselor Erickson and individuals, and Dennis Dugard, and President Abbott, all got this thing going. The state put in a lot of money out there. So was the city. The state, the three buildings that are out there, funded by the state, right? They're invested in this property out there, and now it gives us an opportunity to say, okay, let's try Bob's concept, but in a little different fashion. Let's look at it as a spec building, because that's what it's going to be, and trust in Bob because I know two things about Bob is, once he puts his mind to something, he gets it done, and he does it well. That's what Foundation Park has done. Can you believe the projects that we've had the ability to accomplish because of the leadership of the city, the state, and your organization? And we know two things about the future. It's going to look a little different than it does today. And then, the second thing is, it's going to be rooted in, you know, in our past. What is our past? It's agriculture, it's healthcare, it's finance, it's logistics. What does bioscience need? It needs all of those things. It needs all of those things. And we can be an innovator if we look to help this, this project. And I'm looking forward to it. I think also, like you said, and others have said... And I'm looking forward to it. I think also, like you said and uh, others have said, the details really matter in this. And as we work forward and and get this thing accomplished, it's going to really set us up for some success in the future. Because I I don't know if there are twenty-eight lots out there. I think there are probably twenty-eight lots. Think if we get twenty-eight businesses that have the same two hundred and fifty high-paying jobs. It's going to be a big deal and we're going to be not only keeping our kids here, but we're going to be attracting other people's kids here. Like we already have, but we're going to be doing it with these different industries. So as we continue to look at the details, uh, of which we need to, and get different partners uh, involved in this. We need to show our commitment as a city, and I think that this would be a good way of doing that. So thank you, sir, for your presentation.
Thank you for your comments, and I I would say there is a whole team of people around me, just like you know, and and I happen to be the face of that. So I don't get all the credit for this, right? So and I don't take all the blame either, so. Um, but to Counselor Erickson's point too, I think, you know, this is a marathon. It's not a sprint. Um, we've, this is a type of business that takes a long time to develop and a long time to kind of get on the map. I mean, if you look at how long it took Austin, Texas, to get up on that biosciences map from back in the mid seventies, it's taken a long time for that. So again, I would I would ask not only your support, but also your patience in making this thing work and and getting all the stuff put together. But thank you for your comments. I appreciate that.
Counselor Silver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, things like this certainly need vision and leadership, and I appreciate that, what you've shown on that too, and the presentation today. Um, and I know that we've all been big supporters of the Discovery District. I know in my time on the council. Like Mr. Ingebristson said, you can't sell what you don't have. We need this. Um, he also mentioned getting the state more involved, much as they had been in Brookings. What are we doing to do that? How involved are they now and how, what do we have to do to?
Yeah, at one point in time, um, the state had a commitment out there. And I think with some of the changes with SAB and, excuse me, things like that, they kind of pulled their funding at that time because it was out of the um, the future fund, I believe. And so rather than have that allocated somewhere, they put that back in the future fund with the understanding that we could come back to them at some point in time and talk about how we might leverage them as well. We also got the ready fund that they've kind of made some adjustments to now that we might be able to look into. So again, kind of my point earlier, we've got to look at all the financing opportunities that we have available here to make this thing work with the developer. When, once we pick that developer, we have to sit down with you guys, with your finance team and everybody, and put that together to make sure that it's a win-win situation for everybody involved. So they're they're hopefully a player in this thing. Um, I can't commit them at this point in time, just like I can't commit you at this point in time. But we want everybody to be a player in this thing so that everybody's got some skin in the game. And um, once we, you know, make this thing a success, we can all celebrate together.
Right, yeah, all hands on deck. I agree. And like Counselor Jensen had said, it'd be wonderful to see this take on some of the momentum or same path that we've been seeing recently out at Foundation Park and the visions and that type of thing there too. So anyway, thanks again.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Well, I'll just uh, thank you for your presentation and I will thank you and Dr. Ingebristson and all, everybody that's been working very hard on this the last few months. I know we've been throwing some curveballs, but I think that you get the sense of the council that we'd like to see this go forward and look forward to getting to the bottom line and where we have to commit. So thank you very much. We appreciate. Thanks for driving up.
Yeah, thank you, and stay tuned. More to come.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to the ever insightful and just the best presentation you're going to get for you interns. These, this guy gives the best presentation of all the department ads. Sean Pritchard's going to give us some financials.
Those are some high expectations here, and we have one of our finance interns out there, so I'll hear about it if it doesn't meet the quality standards we've set before us here. Uh, Council Chair, uh, council members, I appreciate being uh, back here at the council here for the May monthly financial report. Uh, got ten minutes here uh, before questions, so I'm going to try to get the remote to work. There it goes. There we go. All right, perfect. Uh, so labor force and employment uh, is up. It is up eight percent uh, since November of last year. So we are seeing some steady improvements there, but obviously we are having uh, significant labor challenges uh, throughout this and the throughout the entire community and particularly in certain areas. But uh, we've certainly seen that as a city in terms of our part-time staffing that's continuing to challenge us uh, going into the summer months of this year. You can see it in our unemployment rates. We're hovering at two point six percent presently, uh, compared to three percent for the whole state and about five point seven percent for the state uh, for the entire nation. Uh, if you look at our insured unemployment rate for last month, we were again the lowest in the entire country. Uh, and we're achieving levels now that are actually below where we were before we entered into the pandemic. So uh, the labor challenges are certainly evident, uh, and that has to come with hopefully improving uh, in in growing our labor force here over time. Inflation is another thing that we continue to monitor, and you can see that that has steadily increased throughout two thousand and twenty-one. It's now standing at five percent as of May. It was up from four point two percent last month and up from two point six percent the month before. So a lot of that is being driven by the energy sector, which you can see has had significant increases here over the last uh, couple of months. Although it was significantly negative throughout two thousand and twenty, so it's not surprising to see that uh, up as well. Uh, the food sector, which was higher last year, has at least continued to moderate. All other goods, so if you look at, you take food out of it, you take energy out of it, where do we stand? Well, we're standing at about three point eight percent. Now, what we don't see there is the impact potentially of the construction trades and what's happening in there. As you're aware from the media reports and and various discussions uh, with lumber costs and other uh, various resources that are necessary for construction. Certainly, we have seen the increases there. Now, there's some recent data on lumber is starting to show some uh, some mediation of that and it's starting to go down. So hopefully, uh, that will continue because that will certainly put some pressure on our construction trades, which, as you can see in the next several slides, has been really robust uh, throughout this year. But it's also particularly important for us as a city as we continue to bid projects going out throughout this year and into next year. We have significant projects that are on the docket, namely the wastewater treatment facility and the public safety facility as well. That will be going out there and and we'll certainly be watching these resource costs as they will probably have some level of impact on those bids as we go forward and trying to maintain what we've already committed to in terms of uh, what we've allocated for funding and so forth. So we'll continue to watch that closely here over the next several months and continue discussions about those items. Uh, throughout May, uh, of course, as you've seen in in various media reports, we continue to have record-breaking uh, building values for this time of year. As we continue to watch that continue throughout the year, we're we're at three hundred and ninety-six million dollars of building permits uh, through May. Uh, that's tracking about a hundred and sixty-three million dollars ahead of last year at this time. That's about a seventy percent increase over last year, about forty-four percent increase over the year before. So again, very strong growth there. That's being led by new residential values, which are experiencing the largest increase. So we're talking single-family homes, townhomes and things of that nature are up about sixty million dollars. So that's even uh, ahead of our new commercial. The other interesting piece is the second piece there, commercial additions and remodels are up fifty-five million. So uh, it's not just new that's occurring out there, but there's a lot of activity in terms of refurbishing existing buildings that we have in the community as well and reinvestment going on there. And then lastly, uh, third behind that is, of course, new commercial values, which were up forty-two million. Uh, but in that is a seventy million dollar increase in multifamily. So you're you're seeing record-breaking units for multifamily going on right now. And that's uh, kind of covering up some softness that you're probably seeing in some of the office and institutional sectors. But you just have variety from year to year, just depending on what happens to get built. Uh, certainly, the number of new units being issued is a really important indicator that we're watching closely. With the job announcements that have been coming, the number of units that are coming online are going to be very critical for our community to be able to support those number of jobs. So uh, at through May, we had four hundred and twelve single-family units permitted. Uh, that's up from a hundred and sixty-three last year. And then on multifamily side, which you can just see is is really kind of exponential growth. Nine hundred and two units through May of this year, up two hundred and thirty-three percent from last year. Uh, and that's uh, we only had two hundred and seventy-one units last year. Now, we back ended a lot of units toward the the second half of the year. And so it'll be interesting to see if this uh, level of continue in uh, continues throughout the rest of the year or if we're kind of seeing a a robust first half and we'll kind of see how the second half of the year goes. So uh, perhaps Director Ekoff has more ideas on where that's that's trending at this point. Um, as far as uh, sales tax collections, I would say we have some pretty positive news overall in terms of where we are trending here. Uh, as we talked about at the last council meeting, our figures are going to be based on a comparison to last year. And it's going to be very difficult for us to compare ourselves to last year. So if you look at May of last year, we were down thirteen percent. So yes, we're showing ourselves being up thirty-five percent, but it's hard to gauge what that really means. So the number I would like to share with you is the one that compares it to two thousand and nineteen. And that's where the city had about a thirteen percent increase over two thousand and nineteen. So when you look at that number over two years, we've we've grown thirteen percent over two years. It's a pretty good figure overall. Not as robust as we were last month, actually. Uh, we were a little higher last month over two thousand and nineteen, but still a very solid figure uh, when you look at that. And if you look at our rolling twelve-month average, we were negative point seven percent at the end of last year. We are now turning positive at four point eight. So you're seeing an acceleration there. Uh, we were negative in sales taxes for a good portion of last year. And so you you should hopefully and continue to see that growth and uh, go into the next several years as well, or the next several months. Um, entertainment tax collections, uh, again, as we talked about last month and and tried to preempt this a little bit. We were down fifty percent in entertainment taxes last month, or in May of two thousand and twenty. We would have to go up a hundred percent just to break even, because that's the way it kind of essentially the math works. Well, we went up a hundred and twenty-five percent, so we did actually see growth. But again, let's look at the two thousand and nineteen number to really tell us what's going on over a normalized year. And from that perspective, uh, we were actually up here uh, eighteen point six percent. So again, uh, it's a pretty solid figure when you're looking at a comparative basis to a more normal year like two thousand and nineteen. Uh, what's occurring in entertainment taxes? So we just got the industry-level data today. And as expected, restaurants continue to perform very well. Lodging saw their first positive month since the pandemic, which is they've been trending in a better direction, but never hit positive. Drinking establishments were also strong. So again, all of that is leading to strong growth within that entertainment tax sector. Um, so the industry-level data, this wasn't in the draft report that we originally circulated, but it was uh, available today, so we're putting it out there. Um, here here's what I can kind of tell you looking at these numbers at least initially. What are we seeing? Continuing to see really strong retail activity. And we're looking at this compared to two thousand and nineteen because you can't compare to last year. So we're seeing strong growth in the retail activity. Uh, we're seeing uh, wholesale trades kind of flip-flop for this month, so had a really strong month last month. Uh, not as strong this month, but manufacturing came through in a big way. So uh, the two are kind of balancing each other out. Uh, overall, there's there's pretty good strength across most all of the core areas around ours. Uh, the things that have been negative in the past, like movie theaters and some of those, they continue to be negative. So the softness of this month was wholesale trade and also some uh, business management consulting. Everything else that had been strong before continued to be very strong. And again, lodging positive for the first time since the pandemic essentially began. Uh, and then drinking establishments and some of those other miscellaneous items also, which had been somewhat negative in the past several months during the pandemic, are starting to turn around. You can see here in the lodging tax uh, kind of supports what I just discussed. Uh, you can see we were down eighty percent in May of two thousand and twenty, so essentially there was, it was non-existent for lodging tax. So it's up five hundred and twenty-one percent this year over last year. But again, you can't really gauge on that, but we are actually up about twenty percent just on the lodging tax piece uh, over two thousand and nineteen. So again, very solid numbers overall in terms of of what we're seeing there and and seeing some actual growth uh, for the first time in quite some time. My expectations with lodging, you talk to people in the lodging sector or you talk with the experience Sioux Falls, is that they expect a really strong tourism summer. Um, but they expect some softness, softness to come back in the fall, uh, because the convention center traffic, uh, business travel just hasn't returned to its prior levels. So expectations there. And then on the bid tax, again, same story, uh, very significant growth, but we did not grow over the same month in two thousand and nineteen. So we're still lagging a little bit in response to the bid side. As far as revenues go, uh, we were forty-six percent of our budget collected. And similar to what we said last month, we are taking all of the local government's assistance out of this. So you can really just see comparatively where we sit from an operational perspective. Uh, so forty-six percent collected uh, thus far this year are about eighty-three million. That compares to about forty-two percent collected last year before we really started getting into deep into those pandemic months. So what is driving that? Primarily some increases in sales taxes above budget. Uh, we also saw a fairly significant increase in property taxes. Now, we don't expect that to to, we expect that that will clear out by the end of the year. A lot of that just happens to be a timing issue of when people pay their property taxes and when we receive it. So uh, I don't expect that that number won't be uh, aligned with what we actually expected for the budget overall. And then as far as expenditures, we're very much in line with where we were last year. We have about thirty-three percent of our budget expended. Uh, this excludes about ten point six five million of expenditures that were related to local government assistance. Those were the dollars that were approved to the Sioux Falls For All Initiative, so we've taken those out, so you don't see though. It's just a transfer out of the general fund into the sales and use tax fund. So that just kind of throws everything out. If you look just at operations overall, uh, we're very much in line with where we were in the past. Uh, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions? Counselors? Counselor Silver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good presentation. How much does inflation right now concern you? And um, it just, I was thinking of this now. Growing up in my formative years about a hundred years ago, my dad ran a couple of businesses. And it was in the age of double-digit digit inflation and mid-teen interest rates. And uh, I don't know, I'm kind of, that concerns me a bit. We're heading in that direction. Maybe you could give our audience of eager young minds here and me a little reminder of what is inflation? And how does it work in a nutshell and why should we be a little bit concerned about this as we're seeing it go this way quick?
Um, so inflation uh, is, you know, the escalation of costs over time. And we always want to see moderate inflation. We certainly don't want to see deflation. And that's somewhat of a rare occurrence to actually see deflation also, although we saw an energy cost last year. Um, but one to two percent inflation, steady controlled inflation over time, uh, that is with with within people's expectations, that's considered healthy and normal. Now, we're starting to see some inflationary indicators showing some some vast increases. And the concerns here, uh, primarily, and and maybe I I speak a little too honestly about this, but I I do have concerns that we're not taking inflation as seriously as maybe we could have. Uh, my concern is there is so much, there's so much cash in the system. There's been deflationary tendencies, I think, to the dollar, uh, the value of the dollar, that there is so much cash being put out the door. Money being generated from the federal level that's being transferred through a any number of programs. This isn't really a political statement. It's being done for very specific reasons. But uh, it it's starting to, I think, churn and drive, and the economy is recovering and that, and will it recover faster than we expected to? And will that lead to those inflationary tendencies? You you chase that on top of, you know, the fact that there's all these production issues that happened during the pandemic where you can't buy certain items, right? So people are chasing the same items with the same dollars. So they have more money chasing fewer items, which is leading to cost escalation. So you can see it in the car markets. You can see it in various other markets. So it's one of the reasons why I think we'll have a very strong tourism. Because as I talked about last month, I think people are going to try to spend money on experiences because they can't always buy things right now, because you can't get them. So I I think that's driving some of the inflation. Now, hopefully, we'll see some of those resources like lumber and some of those, some of those jam-ups that are happening, uh, start reducing that. But it is something I think we'll have to watch over the course of the next six to twelve months.
Thanks for that.
Other questions? Comments? Counselor Starr.
Well, I think the thing I've learned over the years is that as many economists as you have in a room, that's how many opinions that you have by the time we're done. So somebody gets to be right uh, over time when you look back. But you know, following what the Fed, the Federal Reserve is saying is that they're really talking about inflation being transitory and really looking at, is it duration or the magnitude of what it will be? And I'm not sure if it was their term or something else I read, but they were talking about micro uh, inflationary pressures, whether it's lumber and things that are in that short term. And so balancing um, the inflationary worry, because we pay you to be very cautious. I mean, that's a a big part of your job is to to keep us on the straight and narrow. But then our job sometimes as policymakers falls into that, what do we do to continue to stimulate so that you don't fall off of that that cliff when the incentives and all that extra cash stops churning? So not being a an economist, I know that you're not, but.
I actually have an economics degree, so.
Never mind, then I just. All right, then I'll stop now and be. Um, no, 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 but I, what what I'm looking at from a city perspective and in our finances and the amount of cash that we do have, because as a city, we are very flush with cash. We've been given a a lot of cash to to invest and to continue to stimulate. We've been given a lot of cash to invest and to continue to stimulate. But when do we get to that point that we don't need to stimulate? Or maybe that we need to hold back a couple of these big projects that we have, whether it's the water reclamation, whether it's the moving forward with some of the, or delaying because the costs are too high, or there's that micro-inflation that causes in certain categories that maybe it makes sense to wait a year to move forward with the law enforcement training program or some of the street programs? Are we seeing, maybe this is the best way to ask it, are we seeing it in the bidding that we're doing now versus the bidding that we're forecasting? Because the numbers that we get show that a lot of the bidding, or at least the public works bidding that we're seeing is kind of coming in pretty close. There's some abnormalities where people aren't touching things, the filters for the swimming pool where we didn't get any bids, or, you know, some of those things. But are we bumping up our cost estimates? Or are we coming in where we think we should be in some of those? And when, there's a lot wrapped into that and...
Yeah, I think you make a lot of good points there. And I'll start with the first one, is it transactionary inflation? I hope it is. I mean, I hope the Fed's right about that. I hope that it's not systemic at this point. But I think we just have to be cautious with that. I think your point made, as far as stimulative effect. I think we make decisions based on what is the best priority to move forward at the right time for the community, based on the needs of the community. I think we can overstate maybe our stimulative effect that we can have overall, especially when you see the robust activity that we have in the community already. So as far as, I think we make decisions because it's the right thing for the community at the right time as opposed to worrying too much about, or holding back. I don't even suggest we hold back from that perspective. On the bidding side, I guess from what I've seen, and I think you spoke to it pretty well as well, you kind of covered it, is, you know, some of the projects we're seeing coming in pretty good, right? Like a lot of our, I think some of our construction projects, so far, they've been okay. We haven't really bid a large-scale, mass-construction project to the extent where you're using lumber and some of those trades that have really seen some cost escalations occurring over the last year. But as, from the bids I've seen for some of the water projects and so forth, they've been mostly coming in about where our expectations were. Some up, some down, but overall, okay. Filters, that was an issue. But I think that is indicative. We're seeing fewer bidders come in on various projects. And that's the struggles. You may get one bidder or no bids. You know, we're seeing no bids coming in, and that's a challenge overall. But I think the key thing is the type of construction we're going to be doing. And when you're talking about an equipment-heavy project, because equipment has been hard to get, and projects that entail large capital building-type-of-structural investments, that's where I think they're starting to get a little concerned about what the bidding environment's going to look like. But again, we could be five months out, and we could be looking at a whole different environment than where we are today. We just have to be cautious of that. The last thing I would say is, I think you do make an excellent point, though, in that we should, you know, y'all know Tom Huer, and he's essentially said, you know, sometimes there can be great savings in patience. And maybe, you know, there's a time for patience, because we'll get a better value for our dollar 12 months from now than we will now. But again, we have to consider all those as we go through the process.
You did a much better job wrapping that up than I did, so I appreciate that in a much shorter time. The other is, is as we look to invest in the future, what our ARPA monies are and what we have for surplus, capital surplus still waiting for us to kind of make some of those decisions. I appreciate the administration's been well-keeping us in the loop, sometimes more than we want, and extra meetings, and appreciate that part of it. So I wanted to at least say thank you publicly for keeping us involved and giving us a running total and giving us the background of where we're at and giving us an overall picture. So thank you.
You bet.
And I apologize about neglecting your education, and I'll make sure that I don't miss that again.
You know, I never really said it, so nobody knew.
Thank you.
Other questions? See, I just have a couple. Director Pritchard, the American Rescue Act money, is that included in this budget?
It is not. It's not budgeted. It would be budgeted for at the time it's appropriated. So it would be added to the budget then. And since we haven't received any of it, we wouldn't record any of it yet either, so...
Okay, another question.
But if we did actually physically receive it, even if unbudgeted, it would show up in revenue.
Okay.
Actual revenue.
There were some questions about inflation. Is housing currently considered in the inflation numbers?
I'm not a technical expert on how they calculate the inflation number. I would assume that they should, because typically, housing is 30% to 35% of your income for many people is spent on housing. So you would think that housing would be incorporated, at least some semblance of a, whether it's rents or some sort of implied indicator for what housing is. I would have to assume they would include that in there, but...
Okay, because I think that several of us can attest that housing is, certainly the price of housing, has gone up a lot. But last question also relates to housing a little bit. You talked about 902 residential apartment multifamily. So each unit, I'm not sure if this is your area, each unit equates to how many people? Is there a calculation that is generally acceptable to that? And can we, maybe we could...
Do you know what the average is per unit in a multifamily? You use 2.4 as an average for apartment dwellings? Or for every single-family unit? 2.4 for all units, whether single-family, multifamily, or townhomes.
Thank you. That's all my questions. If there's nothing else, I'm going to say thank you for a great spellbinding presentation, as you always do.
Thank you.
We're going to move on now to an update on workforce housing needs in South Dakota, the interim study committee by Jim David, the city council chief of legislation and policy.
And council chair, probably the best presentation of the evening. Just kidding. Thank you for the opportunity to report on my trip to Pierre last week. The workforce housing needs interim study is one of Cent-17 interim committees authorized by the previous legislature. It is chaired by Representative Roger Chase out of Huron, and the vice chair is Casey Crabtree, who's out of Madison. If you look at the map here, there are 19 total members, seven senators, 12 representatives. From the Sioux Falls area, we are represented by Senator Jack Kolbeck, Senator Herman Otten, Representative Jamie Smith, and Senator Larry Zickman. Their expertise on the entire committee ranged from realtors, home builders, bankers, landlords, appropriators, contractors, and more. There was also, I'll point out, a similar study back in 2017. All the legislation that did come out of that committee failed, but they are hopeful that they will have better luck this go-around. At the request of council members Christine Erickson and Vice Chair Alex Jensen, I did attend this meeting last week in Pierre and heard from several experts and interests, including the First Planning District. This is similar to the Southeastern Council of Governments here in Sioux Falls, State Home Builders Association, State Realtors Association, South Dakota Housing, the State Multi-Housing Association, and others. So a consistent theme of this meeting was the imbalance of supply and demand, not just in the growth hubs of Sioux Falls, Brookings, Rapid City, and Watertown, but throughout the state, large and small, east to west. Telecommuting has become a game-changer, especially for small towns in South Dakota. So the struggles that we are feeling here locally is also felt in smaller communities and other parts of the state. Supply continues to be impeded by our labor shortage, building material costs and delays, and land availability. And the demand is intensified by low interest rates in migration from other states and a growing economy, which is really hardly news to anyone, which is reflected by these headlines dating back to the spring regarding the labor shortage, the interest rates, and the migration to South Dakota. So in this committee meeting, there was a discussion on what are some of the challenges? What can we solve locally within the state of South Dakota? The inadequate housing stat, not being able to keep up with demand, infrastructure costs of local governments and the home builder. This inflates the cost of lots. Limited land availability, local cities, they can't buy sewer and water, expansion projects, unnecessary red tape from both the state and local government. However, Senator Kolbeck did specify that he's not interested in dealing with any life safety requirements. And the limited workforce. What I found also interesting, and these stats go back to the spring, is that we have a vacancy rate, which is fairly minimal. In the Black Hills, 1.45%, and in Sioux Falls, 6.65%. This is from spring. I believe they're actually March or April numbers. These are expected to be far less now that it's summer. In 2021, as we just heard, the city multifamily permits have tripled from this year or from last year at this time, which is, again, that demand that is continuing to put pressure on multi-housing. Potential solutions, again, this was a free-flowing conversation, not just amongst those that presented in front of the committee, but also members of the committee. One of the ideas was creating an infrastructure revolving loan fund, reduce the lot cost, have a local match, a 0% interest that balloons afterwards. A comment from Toby Morris, who I know many of you know, was you mitigate the risk, but you don't remove it, and try to create incentive for them to pay it off early. Other ideas was expanding TIF for housing, a sales and excise tax rebate, which would need local participation, neighborhood revitalization, excuse me, neighborhood rehabilitation incentives, possibly using the discretionary formula, expand the governor's house program. Currently, there's a maximum of 400 housing units that they can get out of that prison down in Springfield. The thought is, maybe we need to expand it to other state prisons. Another point that was brought up during this meeting was the fact that material costs on the governor's house has increased by 20%. Other discussion was the property tax, the delinquent property taxes. There's a lot of homes that sit on the tax rolls. They haven't, the property taxes haven't been paid. Expedite that process to get them on the market before they become dilapidated anymore. And then also, from the multi-housing association, was bringing up the, an idea that has been brought forward in a couple of previous legislative sessions, and that's creating a new classification for multi-housing. Currently, it's classified as non-egg or commercial, which is basically what is twice that of the egg levy. So next steps. There was a common theme through all the presentations and amongst the committee's discussion was the need for infrastructure. And so there's going to be an infrastructure subcommittee. Senator Crabtree will chair that. And from Sioux Falls, we do have our district that does, that is within the city of Sioux Falls. Senator Herman Otten will be on that committee. The next committee meeting of that full group is going to be on July 14th in Rapid City. There is hope that there is going to be an East River committee meeting, hopefully here in Sioux Falls, but Brookings was also thrown out as an option. Director Jeff Eckoff was also present during that committee meeting. And there's interest from Sioux Falls there, but unfortunately, there was none on the agenda. Happy to answer your questions.
Thank you for your report. Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Jim, thank you. I know originally, when Alex and I asked you to go, I know you're busy, and we're all busy, and we really appreciate you going and really just getting all this information. I know when Alex and I talked, we said, we should have Jim just give a five-minute update. And you obviously knock it out of the park every single time. I wasn't expecting a full report like this, but this is awesome. This is great information for us to have and to know what was talked about. And I'm certainly grateful that you went, as well as Jeff Eckoff and others from the city of Sioux Falls, because we have to have a presence there. We have to show, this isn't just Sioux Falls. This is statewide, and it's really, really regional. I'll say it again and again and again. How many people pick their heads up off of their pillows for Brandon T., Hartford, Harrisburg, and come and work in Sioux Falls? Or come to eat, or come to a concert, or whatever it is? They spend their money here. And so housing looks different, that it's not maybe everyone will live in Sioux Falls, but they're going to live in other surrounding communities. Would I love all the property taxes? Absolutely. However, it's okay if they live in some of these other smaller communities and still are a part of our region. And so thanks for this. I'm not sure who will be able to make it to the 14th meeting. I have family out there, so I might just head out there anyways to be a participant in the Rapid City area. But I think it's really, really important that we continue to have a presence there as Sioux Falls. So thanks for this. Great information, as always.
Thank you. Counselor Neitzer?
Do you recall when they were talking about limited land availability? That could mean a lot of things. So I'm interested what they might have brought up. For example, the inability to finance the searing it as a city, inability to purchase it at a cost that's reasonable? What was the gist of that?
Yeah, land availability. It, a lot of communities, and we don't really think of it here in Sioux Falls, but a lot of communities throughout the state are at that capacity or approaching that capacity. So it's very difficult for them to provide sewer and water to expand their community. There's demand. If you look in, like Chamberlain right now, there's hardly any homes available. They are, I'm not saying that they have, they're approaching that capacity, but many other communities like them are approaching it. And so the consistent theme throughout that meeting was infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. Now, whether this revolving loan fund would apply to local cities or developers, I'm not sure. I mean, it was, one thing I will say about this group, I looked at the agenda, and I'm like, I'm not getting out of here by 5:00. They said 3:00 o'clock. I'm not getting out of here by 5:00. I think they're done by 3:30. I mean, they kept on agenda. But what was amazing about this group is that it was a free-flowing conversation. It wasn't one person throwing out idea and then getting shot down. It was like, everybody, let's just come with solutions. And that was also unique. It wasn't complaints. And I think Counselor Jensen brought this up earlier during our meeting with the interns. Don't just bring your complaints forward. What is the solution? And every single individual on this agenda brought forward a solution. And whether they go with that or not is going to be difficult to say. But it was a great meeting, and I think there was a lot of potential. I'm excited to be there. And I slipped out for some lunch, came back, and they were just trucking right along, so...
Was there any discussion about the significant amount of various stimulus money the state has received and what they could maybe deploy that for, such as helping to maybe build infrastructure and some of those things?
Yeah, the revolving loan fund. I mean, utilizing that, there was discussions on possible grants, you know, whether a grant would be the correct way to go. But then there's like, we want locals to have skin in the game. We want developers to have skin in the game. And so using those stimulus funds for a project like that, I'm sure there was others I'm not thinking of right offhand, but using those federal dollars for housing, whether... And there was an example in Mitchell, I guess. The, I don't know if it was the city or some group had purchased a large tract of land and then actually then tried to develop it. They talked about some of the pitfalls that they experienced, but now that is starting to take off. There's a community outside of Brookings, I think it was Esteline, that talked about a similar program. So really, there was a wider range of options. And, but definitely, the federal funds are a key component to that. And that is, I think, the optimism that the committee felt that whatever they put forward to the legislature, there is a good chance that it could actually pass, because now there's actually money, before there wasn't money.
Yep, okay, thanks.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Sober?